Is two o'clock and I'm calling a meeting of the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Committee to order. We have a quorum, Mark Glanzman, oh yeah, Mark, you're here, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, snuck in. Just snuck in, excellent, okay, all, all members are present. And welcome, welcome Tony. So just for the benefit, and we have on Zoom, we have an eight oh five number, we have Christina Galloway, Jim Berenger, Mark Garmin and Rollins. So, so for all of those who are attending, I will look, you know, try to pay attention to when hands are raised and engaged as appropriate. And if anyone sees hands raised and I miss it, I'll take all the help I can get. And so let's just get a quick introductions around the table. We've got some new guests and then I'll ask you all to do the same. Healy, you were served.
Yeah, Healy Dodson, Confidential Administrative Assistant.
Matt McLeahney, General Manager. Mark Glanzman, Committee Member.
Gary Stevenson, Committee Member.
Matt Jaffe, Committee Member.
Shannon Sutherland, Vice Chair.
Jeff Wilson, Committee Member.
Michael Thomas, Committee Chair.
And start with you, Tony. Tony Church, President. David Lacy, President.
Boris Schwartz, Cambria Forest Committee.
Amy Pendleton, Brother.
Julie Amade, Skate Cambria.
Tina Dickerson, Cambria.
Thanks so much for, for, for all of you attending. So, share report, I'll try to be brief. A lot has happened, we've had the strategic, the major strategic planning update. And, you know, as part of that update, there was revisions to the mission and mission statement, some revisions to requirements to the value statements. We added preparedness as a district value, given the importance of that. We added core area, you know, the core areas, we've had water, wastewater services, you know, the primary services as core areas. And there was no kind of cross-functional core area, so the, the board added finance, administration and finance as a core area with the, the soul of pulling it all together. Let's see, other key highlights, you know, the, right, the Brown Act training on, on the 12th, most of the committee attended. And on the 13th, there was the board meeting, there was an hour and fifteen minutes of discussion and consideration on the, on the skate park, culminating in the board approving a motion to receive funding from the current grant at the location across the street and I did not clearly identify the funding gap, verify who bears the risk of cost overruns and when the community council has funds to close that gap, proceed with that RFP, that's brief summary, we'll get into that more later, I'm sure. And, and community park was, was discussed. Also on the 13th, about forty-five minutes worth of discussion, so very substantive discussion. And board received and filed the many parks based three plan that the ad hoc committees brought at the last meeting and and instructed staff to conduct a pre-application meeting with the county, so that's so both of those things will be discussed in more detail later. And yeah, tomorrow, probably everybody knows the community fair.
No, the Thursday.
Saturday, yes, yes, day after tomorrow. You know, right over here in the I draw the lot, um, that's, that's a lot, okay, question? And agenda review, I've got nothing to change, anybody?
Excuse me, Chair, do you have any more agendas? There are a number of people here without agendas.
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. So, ad hoc committee reports, there are no ad hoc committees that are not currently on the agenda, so no report there. So, committee member of communications, anyone on the committee you want to, you know, dive in and share?
Just one quick thing, the, we were invited to participate in the community fair, the
Yeah, community fair.
The community fair, and I was think, we were thinking about it and we declined, so.
Okay, so you won't be out?
We will not be out there.
Okay, I'll have, I'll have an F F R P shirt on, etc., yeah, they wrote me into that, okay, good to know. Anybody else? All right, on we roll, and
We have something big on the agenda?
I don't know, but this is great, and if more, if more folks come in, make sure they know there's chairs there. I have a sign in sheet, you don't, you don't have to sign in, but it's great for us if we can remember who all was here, so that's, that's awesome. So, reports, so I'm two on the agenda. Two oh seven, reports from affiliated community groups. County Parks and Rec. I, I don't
Obviously Ron.
From Ron.
Yeah, obviously Ron, unless he's the eight oh five number here, I don't know.
Yeah, Ron, if that's you, with the nineteen hundred number, raise your hand and let us know. It went on, let's see, Claudia, so, Forest Committee, Laura, you're on.
I, I thought Green Space might go before us, but I just wanted to shout out.
I think I have an alphabetical, that's, that's my logic, yeah.
Okay, Cambria Forest Committee, and the thing is, I just want to shout out, we're, we're going to be there that birthday on the twenty-seventh of April, that, excuse me, Green Space is having young in the park. We're going to be having different things for donations there, we have our, our new weed guide, which is the second edition with some additions and to help with the weeds around here right now, it's perfect timing since everything is growing like crazy. We, we just continue to have our meetings and try to bring all the environmental groups or anybody from the public who's interested in any of that together. It's open to the public, it's Zoom meetings on the second Fridays of the month. And it is soon, and just go to Cambria Forest Committee to get a connection to the Zoom for that particular meeting.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, I the author of the Cambria Guide, Weed Guide is here for the public here, and Christine Heinrichs, Gypsy Potter. We have extra copies available now. Yeah, we have a few copies with us if anybody is interested.
If you haven't seen it, I mean Christine, your postings on next door are awesome, you know, every week you're posting some, some invasive with a great story about it, is it, is it a weed? You're doing that?
Well, yes, I'm putting something in every issue now, and then she's going to archive them under, actually, under the health and safety because you're a fire danger.
Yeah.
She's gonna, she's gonna create her own archives of the weeds.
Yesterday, it was all about bull pistols, and that was all considered a light experience, yeah, they do hurt. Thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
I just want to give a shout out, Christine is also the Secretary of the Forest Committee.
Right. Moving on, Friends of the Dog Park, I don't see Shelley here or online, so she needs something, she chimed in. Green Space. I didn't see Corinne. Ran Torino, I don't see Keith online. And it was Suzanne, either Lampington Cliffs, they're, they're making great progress, you know, she's not here now, but today, but yeah, they're making great progress at Lampington Cliffs. On Slow Land Conservancy, Laura, you wanted to comment?
Right, I just wanted to comment on that, I'm just going to read an article that wasn't in the state, which is a brief thing, my husband and I are members of it, but we're very interested in land conservancy. And it's an organization that they just continue to do a lot of environmental things in the county. They're purchasing or turning conserving hundreds of acres down between Caipus and Morro Bay, the whole area is turned, over the years, going to turn into somewhat of a campground and all conservation land, it's going to be restored and taken care of them. They've done the, just thousands of acres in the, in the county, they also did the Pismo Reserve down there near Pismo Beach, which is extremely popular, they're doing things, and the one thing that I wanted to mention, maybe a hint here to Cambria, the land conservancy is basically funded by the coastal, California Coastal Conservancy, which has in the past given millions and millions of dollars to Cambria to purchase part of the Fiscolini, to do the bridge over Main Street, they're also the same ones that started the program to conserve our environmental lots here in Cambria. And they started it with a considerable donation and the land conservancy is the organization that takes over for them in, in monitor, the, the last thing on the seven hundred and fifty acres that they just acquired down near Morro Bay, the coastal State Conservancy donated one point five million for that project. So they're still very, very active in giving money to people that, and organizations that will cooperate with them.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and it was, yes, anyhow, there you go.
Thanks. So, this is a special meeting, not one of our regular meetings, we had to cancel the, the one in, in, in March, so as a special meeting, public comment, you know, is is directed at items on the agenda, and because it's a special meeting, we can't enter, cannot entertain public comment on things that are not on the agenda, my apologies for that, so just around the room, does anyone in the group, in, in, attending, wanted to comment at this stage?
Are we allowed to comment? You just said it's a public.
On items that are, that are on the agenda, and, and also, and also
We wait till that agenda item comes up?
And that is totally your choice, you're welcome to comment now on any item, or when the agenda item comes up, you can comment on it at that time, which is more relevant.
Right.
Your choice.
Well, okay, a choice, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On the computer, and there's even more people here now, and it looks like Corinne is here, so I'm going to ask Corinne if you would like to report on Green Space. Just raise your hand and I'll figure out the right button to there we go. Can you go ahead, Corinne?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so Green Space, let's see. We have RCD is starting our Habitat Restoration Project in Strawberry Canyon. We're excited about that, there's going to be three sites that are getting some new, all California native plants, shrubs, and understory to supplement where either the rains or fallen trees have taken some of that restoration out, that's one of our grants with the RCD. We're all waiting for the Coastal Commission meeting in September for the permits, well, August, for the permits to go through for the coastal Cal V T P project, and hopefully right after that, we'll be able to start our fuel reduction project in Strawberry Canyon, much needed, much awaited, we're super excited about that. And along with that, the herbivory grant from Fire Safe Council for the goats and sheep will implement that in the fall after the crew gets in there and cleans up some of the dying and downed wood. On events, we have our speaker series going, Earth Day is coming up at the end of the month. Saturday, September twenty-seventh, we'll have about thirty eco-organizations, again, music, classes all day at the Learning Center, movement classes down in the meadow, it's free, family-friendly, I encourage everybody to come. I always need volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer to help with Earth Day, just call the office or email me, director@greenspacecambria.org. And then our annual fundraiser, the auction, is going to be at the Jocelyn Center at the end of May. And that's, I'll wrap it at that.
Fantastic, questions for Corinne, from anyone in the committee or in the audience? Okay. So, that brings us, unless I'm missing something, I think that brings us to reports and updates, facilities and resources.
So David had a, David had a doctor's appointment, so he wasn't able to make it today. I just can give a couple of updates on what Mr. Gary's been working on. We're starting the CCSD kind of re-debatment piece, working on the ranch. He may take a different approach as far as that re-debatment, because there are some areas that are escher that have been mowed entirely in the past, and so we're identifying those areas and just doing a buffer around those areas, I'll be able to explain that a little bit better on his next report. David came to me and spoke to me about the trippers, the trash cans, the very popular trash cans, and because of the grant that is taking care of a lot of the CCSD-owned lots that we need maintenance is off his shoulders, so now he has started doing three of those trippers each week, sanding and restaining them. And so
We go week?
That's what he's doing, yeah. And so he, he says that he's now able to do it, so we're supporting him, and so he's got that scheduled worked out with Befi Cambria. I think they're working on new plants that are going into the, those different receptacles, and so, yeah, yeah, so he's working on that, so he, I think he gave me a three-week timeline that he should have it done, we'll see.
Awesome.
And that's kind of all I have for him.
Yeah.
If I may, two things, on, one, I was on the ranch yesterday, and I don't know if this is the right place
Oh, good, yeah.
For your ex-kitty and F F R P, but it comes in to David as well as the signage thing, I mean, the new signs look, look great. I mean, as everybody knows, if they've seen him, there's probably what, fifteen rules, little signals and stuff like that, but, right? But what I'm getting at is, is when I walked out yesterday, easily half the people that were on the bluff trail were off-trail out on the cliffs, and so I just kind of want to reiterate, and I'm not sure where that project stands, that that I, it's great, the new signs, but I don't think that's going to effectively deal with the people that are going off bluff trail out to the cliffs, and then we need, that needs to be supplemented with either barriers or signage or both, that's some of the key points where it's clear people go off-trail, so
Well, and, I could comment on that briefly, yeah, from the north end, as I was walking the bluff a few days ago, starting at the north end, Facilities and Resources has cabled off. Looks, I stepping off maybe a quarter of the, of the, from the north.
Maybe.
And is using a great combination of those little metal things that screw in
Yeah.
with the eyes.
Yeah.
Existing posts and new posts, so it's not concertino wire.
No, it's not an unadvocated.
It's, one could, one could surmount the, the little cable, but it is a visual indication.
Yeah.
So that's, that's in progress, I just wanted to say from my perspective.
Yeah, they're still, they're still working on it, I don't know the timeframe on when they'll be complete. The signage piece, that would be David working with Kitty, because the, they're kind of the ones that have signed up for owning any of the signage, so if there's additional signage that they want to put up.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and, and so, yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't entered or exited through the north in quite a while, mine has been on the southern section, so that's great news. The second thing is, is update on David's staffing? Do we, is there any?
You, you mean with the departure of
Yeah.
Oscar?
Yeah, sure.
So David has decided to cost save that position. He believes with the grant that has come in, which has allowed for them to not have to do a lot of this re-debatment in the district for budgetary purposes, he wants to cost save that position, he thinks he might be able to handle the district maintenance with the two maintenance technicians and himself, and will revisit it, you know, throughout this upcoming fiscal year and see how he's doing, but I mean, that's with salaries, benefits, wages, that's a significant chunk of costings.
Sure.
I'm
I mean, it's just that a, my initial thought of wow, because he's already, he's sort of, he's been under-resourced for some time, but that's a different path to go down, that does worry me, because he's so understaffed and under-resourced.
Yeah, we had, we had a deep conversation about it, and I, I said, I'll support you. You know, he, it's his budget, you know, it's our budget to manage, but it's his budget that he's got to stay within, and he thinks he can do it, so we're going to, you know, and I said, we'll be checking in regularly, and if it's not working, we'll fly the position.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, great questions. Anyone else? And, you know, the, the public, questions, comments on Facilities and Resources? And, no hands are up, if you have questions, pop your hands up, okay, then Kitty Conley, for, for, item four B, Kitty Conley sent me a Gmail with some information to share. Just says, first, for Ranch Room Reno, they have safely burned a hundred and fifty piles with two hundred more to go. Doesn't look like we have any more rain in the forecast, so my guess is that would be next year, but yeah, I walked by, you know, a number of times, and they were doing a great job, okay, F F R P will be at the, on, at the Community Fair Saturday. The Wildflower Show, also in the same weekend, as Corinne was mentioning, the seventeenth Cambria Wildflower Show will be here at the Vets Hall, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, this is a, yeah, you don't want to miss this. And, and, and I wouldn't, I, I would be amiss if I didn't suggest, as you walk out, just kind of poke your head through that window and look, and between those dots and, and, and Mr. McLeahney, the storage bins with, I don't know how many hundreds of boxes or thousands.
Thirteen hundred boxes of records going all the way back to when we are water district, so sixty-nine, sixty-eight-ish.
Ah, so they're rationalizing that, going through the records retention, so it's just like, you know, it's a race, because there will be in three weeks, what is today, four, you know, in four weeks, there'll be tables full of flowers in there, so appreciate that. Okay, the new trailhead signs, seven have been completed, four more are coming, and if you haven't seen those, that's a great, a great thing to watch. Tom Loganville and Walt Andrus have been lead on, on those, and they're looking great. Yeah, weeding continues staffed by the independent volunteers, I'll take that compliment. Santa Barbara Botanic Garden delivered six hundred and twenty-eight plants to F F R P grown under contracts with the US, the upper Salinas, Los Tablas. R C D, a recourse, a resource, a conservation district. And so those will be understored plants to be planted mid-ranch. And Green Space and F F R P will jointly promote a City Nature Challenge. A citizen science project, observe all different species possible in one weekend and record them using iNaturalist the same weekend as the Boilhouse Flower Show and the Earth Day Festival, so I, that's, that's Kitty's report. So that brings us to the skate park project, so Julie and Matt, who
I'll give you something.
I thought so, thank you, what, Julie, you're on?
Want me to start? I'd love to give an update, first, I want to thank our community back on March thirteenth, who showed up. For all those who were on public comment, on Zoom, went to the mic and voiced their support of the project, we want to deeply say, and we have the Skate Cambria, thank you. We strongly believe the result of that was a five oh vote coming out of our board, so we also would like to thank the board. We left that meeting knowing that we had to come up with a very creative campaign, and so you're going to be hearing the campaign called Cap the Gap, and we took that very seriously. Cap the Gap. Cap the Gap, and we took that very seriously in the sense of how to go about a responsible fundraising effort on whatever that gap is, and I'm sure there'll be some public comment to that after I'm done speaking. So I just want to lay out the next couple of weeks as to what we've already got in motion. Also to let you know, we've already had two very generous community members step up and donate five thousand dollars each, as well as interest that has come off of our, our money that is being housed by Cambria Community Council, there was another four thousand there. So there's fourteen thousand, we've got a grant application that's moving forward that will fund swiftly for another twenty-five thousand, so there's thirty-nine thousand. And before I walked into this room, I had a very generous friend wish me a happy birthday belated, and hand me a check for two hundred dollars in support of the project. So there's thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars as of March thirteenth. Thank you, so moving forward, of course, we will be part of our nonprofit event, we'll be there at this location this Saturday, April fifth, come down and see us, we'd love to take your money. We will be there to educate you on the progress of the park. Also, on March fifth, by coincidence, I'm sorry, April fifth, is the nonprofit event series that's called Monster Skate. It's the largest contest series, we have community member daughter who is an active participant in that series. And the first day of the event will be in Templeton, we won't be there because we will be here at the nonprofit event, have high Dorado. But they, of course, put us within the skate series, so you'll see Skate Cambria as part of that series. And they're very anxious for us to, of course, have a park, so we can add into being a location for the event. Next up is March, I'm sorry, April twenty-second, and that will be at Dream Quest, it's called the First Full Moon Potluck from five to eight P M. And that is Pep Fernandez, and he'll be holding a potluck and all donations will be going to the skate park. So again, that's April twenty-second from five to eight, we're very thankful for that, remember that coming. And on April twenty-sixth, the Slow Film Festival, which is a very large event, has a dedicated day now called Community of Skate, Stacy Peralton is behind that. And there'll be two films shown that day, one is actually put together by Cruise Control, and if you got a chance to see his gallery show, Stacy Peralton was here, it was pretty, pretty awesome. Second film being shown, if you go to the Slow Film Festival, ticketing, the top of the ticketing page for Community of Skate Day is a live link to our donation, so they are supporting us a hundred percent in sampling of this book, so we're grateful to be part of the Slow Film Festival. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we're already placing ourselves for fundraising effort, and I think I'll let others speak. And again, thank you very much for all those who came to our support on March thirteenth.
Fantastic, yeah, I, you know, the, the amount of public comment was just heartwarming at the board meeting. General, anything else to?
Yeah, so, so the board requested another M O U with the community council. It discusses about these overruns in the project, and it'll be in addition to the existing M O Us. So what District Council and I have been working on is that M O U, the two different staff reports that discuss the whole skate park project. That also is in line with the conservative approach that the board wanted to take. They talked, the board mentioned multiple times that they want the project to go forward, but they're committed and stuck at committing their a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. There's been no talk of increasing that amount, I mean, so we are, as staff, are holding the line at that a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. When you add the forty-seven five from the restroom When you add the forty seven five from the restroom. And all of the preconstruction cross costs to date, our balance at the C C S D level is a hundred and five thousand dollars. When you add that to what we've been given from Mr. Clark, what he has in mechanics banks and Edward Jones. And we just added the thirty nine thousand two hundred. The council is basically altogether our money and their money together is four hundred and fifty three thousand, four hundred and seventy seven dollars. So how do we get the cap, we cap the gap? So to speak, so taking a conservative approach under advice from just as council. Is we are taking the two mock bids that we got from um Shaba's Construction. Uh Cisco from coastline grading. The two engineering estimates that we have from Canon Engineering Civil Design Studio. We are averaging those out to create a target number. Okay, the bids, the mock bids do not have an engine, a contingency money piece to it, but the. Engineering estimates do of about fifteen percent. So we've removed the fifteen percent contingency from the engineering estimates. Created an average of all four estimates quotes of how to, how much it's going to cost the skate park. And we're bringing that forward in the staff report and letting the board decide the contingency amount. Because the board mentioned it wants to protect the district in terms of any more money being put into the skate park from the district. That'll be brought forward for a discussion this next week. And uh. It's pretty much where we are.
Great. So. That was my question. When will we have the funding gap defined and you're bringing that to the board? Correct from today?
Was that?
Oh, we from today, you're correct.
Yeah, awesome. Staff report is into Mr. Carmel. And we're finalizing that.
Wow. Way to get on that, Tom. Yes, from the committee first, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Uh, was there a lot of variation in the bids? That would, so that I'm just curious, is there like twenty five thousand dollar difference or two hundred thousand dollar difference matters?
From the mocks, from the mock bid?
Yeah.
So Steve Stravas was at roughly one point two one million. And Cisco's was at one point four eight million with an in kind donation of around forty thousand dollars. So he's kind of lessening his bid.
So like two dif- two hundred thousand difference is that about roughly right?
No, probably, probably about sixty between the two bids.
Yeah.
Now compared to um the engineering estimates, there's a big gap.
Okay.
On what the potential cost could be. And there's overruns, there's always change orders in our projects, which creates uncertainty.
Sure. And then just to the issue of sort of inflationary pressures, uh particularly now, um. Is that also being factored in in some way? I don't know if we have a timeframe on which the cap, the gap can be accomplished. I know there's no crystal ball, but if you say, okay, we're going to cap the gap in a year, what do we expect inflation to be? For these materials and costs in a year and adding that in, let's just say that's ten percent. Is that?
Well, I think that's that may, that may have to be a part of the discussion with the contingency that the board sets.
Okay.
So we kind of average all these numbers and say, this is without any contingency monies. This is what, this is what the average of what the park could cost. What kind of contingency does the board want on top of that?
Got it.
Will that account for? The inflation, how long will it take to close that gap? Will the board put a deadline on when the gap needs to be closed? That'll be a board discussion.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Fantastic. So so questions, uh, uh, right, Mr. Disken had raised your hands. Let's go to a little bit of public questions. And since you had raised your hand first, why don't we just go this way with questions?
Thank you, Chair Tom. One thing that the general manager did not mention today that he has been mentioning throughout. And a huge expense anywhere up to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for P G N E to give you an estimate. For a line to be run or even a paracle, I read too. I I reached out to county planning. And I, I mean, in my own mind, I'm going, wait a minute, outdoor restroom prefabricated, why does it need electricity? None of, you know, all of the the campground, the state parks, washroom, uh restroom, they don't have electric lights. They have skylights. And so I I brought it to the attention of county planning and building. Could could the small prefabricated restrooms? Have some form of natural light lighting, i.e. a tubular solar. Um, a small solar panel with battery pack up, back backup, sorry. Or um a skyline. So I, you know, I go out birding a lot and walking and hiking. I go to these restrooms and I've been taking note of them. And for instance, uh, at Washburn, let's take that for an example. They have a gable roof. Um, I think there are four, four restrooms in that one. A lot of them have four restrooms. And so on one side of the gable roof, there are uh some sky, sort of uh sloping skylights. Which provide ample room for uh parks that are open from sunrise to sundown, which would be the case with this. With this particular car. So my response from Andy Knighton, who's in charge, was in charge of this project, this state park. Part project in slow county planning. Said, quote, he he checked with building. He said, the structure being proposed is reviewed slash approved by H C D and shipped to the site. We don't review pack factory built elements. There are allowances in the California Building Code. For both natural and artificial lighting. I do not understand, since in the design for the state park. No lighting is included in the design, nor would lighting be required. For a project that's open from sunrise to sundown. So I would like to ask, where is, where are we with imagining that P G N E needs to be? The lighting source. And very expensive, when this would be not only a less expensive. Um, way of of looking at lighting for this restroom, but the one with the dog park.
So that that's, I I think the general manager gets the gist and that uses the three minutes.
Alright, okay, I know we were.
So I've reached out to Andy Knighton as well. Got, it it's not a requirement for P G N E to be hooked up. But from a district perspective, a district property, there are maintenance issues with all of our restrooms day and night. And so, and Mr. Green is online and we've discussed, we think it would be the more prudent thing. To have power to that site. We are also looking at quotes for solar and battery backup. Um, that could be less expensive. We don't know what P G is going to cost. Mr. Green just gave a range because it's so much. So we're looking at a couple of different options. The pre pre manufactured restroom may have some natural light in it. Um, we can bring forward all of those options to the board. When we get time uh to, at one point when we get ready to bring it forward for an R F P, there can be a discussion about power, no power. But from a staff level perspective and a maintenance perspective, from a water maintenance perspective, having power at our restrooms. Is probably the more responsible thing to do since we will be managing this park in perpetuity. But if there's a decision to go into solar or no power at the skate park, we can bring up before the board for a decision.
Okay, so under consideration and stay tuned. Fantastic. Thank you.
It's also a green energy, so it helps with.
We're gonna move on.
Yep. That was my same question. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks.
My question too, um.
And your, your name again?
Christine.
Thank you.
We go to the dog park a lot, walking around there and we noticed that the restroom was going to have water and lights and everything like that. And it's in an obscure part of. The town and we were very concerned since already there are homeless people that are already hanging out there waiting for it to open. A lot of the women there are very concerned because sometimes they bring their dogs there by themselves. And um I've even taken pictures of some of them sitting there waiting for the restroom to open. Or sitting around it or sitting on the cement or something like that. Maybe you don't see them when you're there, but we see them when we're there. So we're very concerned about this, plus the lighting. We were talking about the lighting, why, why is it even there? I mean. We've done fine with porta potties, but it's, it's already done. So now it can't open and. We don't care whether it's open or not. Um, it's, it was a difficult thing to see it there in the middle of nowhere. For those of us who use utilize that place every, most every day. And we're used to using, going home or not using the porta potty anyway. That it's, it's like a sore thumb out there, but the lighting and and we concerned about the lighting, if the light goes on, light goes off. Who's going to hang out there at night? Who's going to clean it up? Who's going to clean it up after, you know? There's an encampment. We don't, you know, we're just sort of like looking in the future there. And we want to keep it safe for everyone and it's, it's in an obscure part of the um land of of our part of community. So that's what we're, you know, that's my part of it. Anyway. I don't know what you have to say.
Let the people speak.
Excuse me, Tina. Um, yeah, but.
I thought we were going around the room.
We, we will, but and and uh until your chair, please don't attempt to direct the meeting. Uh, thank you. And uh, the general manager may have the opportunity to respond to each.
We talked to David about it too. He was concerned as well.
Yeah, so the board decided. To put the restroom there as a component to being able to do something with the community park. It was a requirement. And so the board made that decision. Now it's here.
Can I ask where the requirement came from?
The county.
So is it because the county donated to it?
No, that's just a requirement.
Just a requirement because in Templeton, there's no restaurants at the dog park. They have a porta potty.
I can just tell you the permitting process. For the community park and putting anything permanent on that land, we've had multiple meetings with the county, a restroom was required. For the lighting, um, the lighting will be on a timer. It's dark skies compliant dusk to dawn. And it will be off in the evenings. However, if there is some sort of an event, maintenance event. There could be the opportunity that staff would turn it on to fix whatever's wrong, but then it would be shut off.
Also, it it worth pointing out, the uh the restroom. Wasn't really installed to serve the dog park solely. It's, it's. The intent of that community park, it had to be a community park. And so this was the, yeah.
When we, when I was, I was with friends of the ranchland at the very beginning when we named it. Um, and we saved the east west ranch from development. No matter how you put it, this is development to us because it's supposed to stay a natural reserve, a preserve out there.
Thank you.
And that's what's.
And so, yeah, we're a little bit off topic. So a little bit, uh, because we're on.
Skate parks.
We're on the skate park. So yeah, thanks for that reminder. Yeah, we're with, well off topic, but sir, you you wanted to comment one more.
I can say just a brief thing about the skate park. Um, I'll be seventy seven this summer. I was skating on a board of metal wheels. Down near Venice Beach before the bones brigade stopped nursing from their mothers and uh and know all of them. I'm not concerned about the skate park. I I think they should stay here. Maybe they need a porta potty period. Skaters are more rugged, like Harley Davidson riders compared to Yamaha riders, you know? I just want to say one thing I'll I'll never speak again. What she brought up just briefly about the east west ranch and the preserve, the rodeo grounds and all that. Yes, you had to build the bathroom. I think until Andrea comes to terms with the homeless situation. Irresponsible to provide anything that attracts them. As we speak right now, she and I saw it, drug deals are going on behind your black hat.
We saw that.
You know, I mean, it's going on. There's an alcoholic guy in the rodeo grounds and already. Thought the bathroom was open. I picked up. Sixteen vodka bottle that he produces in one of those little camps in the rodeo grounds. David said he's picked up fifteen more. You need to address this before you ever do anything. Because of the single woman issue, you're aware of the woman that was dragged down into the, into the creek. You're aware of the machete boy. Who went up to Hearst Castle and had fun with himself and nobody would stop him. There's a lot of things going on that you need to take care of before you even quit on a beach prom grill. Okay, now the last thing, the last thing. Back in the seventies, there was a meadow very similar to the rodeo grounds in Mammoth Lakes. It was on Old Mammoth Road, which was like Main Street. It was the only Alpine Meadow that anyone could access. Be it eight years old or eighty years old. We was owned by the Forest Service. We thought it was in perpetuity. Little did we know that a developer from Idaho figured out, oh, I could buy five hundred acres of scruffy land across the highway. And trade it. For this meadow and it became Old Mammoth Meadow and Still Creek condominiums and all this crap. This is the only meadow near the ocean adjacent to a main street anywhere from Orket to Santa Cruz. It's the only one and it's for locals. If tourists want to walk in there and enjoy the solitude and peace along the creek and the meadow, they should be able to do that. But to turn it into an urban park where everyone who comes up to visit probably has in their own neighborhoods. I think it's, I think it's a disaster and if you go forward with it, you'll regret it in the future.
Yeah, thank you for the comment and and I love that to continue, even though it's off topic of the skate park. It certainly does fit within facilities and resources. So I, that's why I didn't cut that off. But yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Um, and we are on the skate park project update. So if we can keep our comments relevant to that, I'll appreciate.
And can you imagine having kids over there?
Ms. Schwartz.
Really?
I bring my grandkids there.
It's Ms. Schwartz's turn. This is, this is not a free.
This is too important. Sorry, Michael.
Uh, Mr. Disken, uh, I'm going to ask you to wait till your turn and be recognized. Uh, this is not a free for all. Um, this is for.
Just, just quickly on the economics of the skate park, you know, I'm a numbers person and the. The community is, is, has donated so much to this in part in cash. Has him any accounting of the employees' hours? Has been put into this, including the council? I mean, we're, to me, it seems like there's a lot more dollars being spent on it than we're aware of. End of comment.
Yeah. No, yeah.
I mean, um, we've spent. Hundreds and hundreds of hours on skate park.
That's my point.
But that's, that's through salary employees, you know, that. How do you account for that in terms of a financial hit? They just take on the work and it's been a lot of work. So Mr. Green, Mr. Reaper, Mr. Johnson. Since we were told we were awarded this grant and had to work through all of the federal processes. It has been hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of work. To me, every single bureaucratic red tape piece of this grant and it will continue to happen. Because if the skate park, excuse me, skate park breaks ground. Then there's the reimbursement process with the federal government. So every single invoice you send in to get reimbursement. We spend from the general fund reserves that have been encumbered. Then we submit reimbursement and those reimbursements are very detailed. And the federal government under the new administration is scrutinizing everything. So there's risk of not getting a reimbursement if it's not done correctly. So staff's gonna have to spend an incredible amount of time. Managing this moving through next.
That's my concern.
So I'll just share, you know, show this perspective that the general manager is executing the direction set by the board. He's executing it quite well. Worth bringing this to the board and I, and I know you have. So, but thank you. Sir.
Part of the cap the gap. Effort that truly talked about. And what I'm interested in. Process because the process, I've been into the M O U. Sets the threshold of the goal for the cap the gap. So um the M O U. According to the general manager will be approved discussion. I didn't hear discussion and decision. I just heard discussion. Knowing that this time of year is probably cheaper to start a process than later. Every sort of moment that we rejected the future a decision, which can really. Help the cap the gap people frame what the effectiveness is a delay. And, you know, I I've worked in a big company. I worked with a lot of committees. And when there was an alignment between committees, there was a tendency for hurdles to be put up and. Slow walking and we used to call it slow walking. And I don't think this is bad. I I realize that it's complicated. There's a lot of pieces and parts that have to come together. But I would say there's a lot of momentum behind this. Some of the kids that I bought pancakes at age from four or five years ago, well, they're. They're leaving, they're gone. And we have a whole generation of kids that we don't want to have them look at us and say, oh, my big brother. He was really involved with this. And now my big brother's gone and now it's not going to be available for me. So I just. So I just, this has to be a priority until they have done.
Thank you, David. Tony, okay, yes, Marty.
Yes, I'm a key processor and I'm also part of the community that has been supporting skating area. I think that because we have so many people, so many kids that are invested in it, same with kids too. My own little granddaughter did a lemonade stand and raised five hundred dollars all by herself.
Wow.
And she said to me, as the years go by, she's eleven now, and she's a skateboard girl participating in monster skates. She said, gee, why is this taking forever? And I said, you're just taking forever. Oh, when you're a child, it's really a long time. But these kids have raised money. It's not just us community members that buy them. The kids have done it. You've seen the amount of their buckets. The CCS team, you can image to serving our kids. And one thing that you said the last evening was give us a number. Give us a number so we have a goal. Because I will tell you, like, I work with, I'm on a capsule board. You give us a goal, we'll do it. But give us a, a realistic goal and not the most expensive goal. Be prudent with my, well, granddaughter's five hundred dollars. Don't go out and spend money you don't need to spend. If you don't have PG&E, get the silver, that's least expensive. As a mom, you bunch it and you do the most economical thing. You don't take the highest bidder. You take the one who's going to work with you. We have contractors here in town who said we would low bid these guys that are coming in with these really expensive bids. So let's just say the economical and my feeling is that people will come up with the money, but we need to have a realistic, realistic and also being cautious about our money. I'm saying CCS teams and they cannot contribute any more money. So it's our money, it's the community's money, it's the kids' money. So let's stick with the most economical way to do this, get it done. We've reached the, the funding, what was supposed to happen and yes, there might be some increases, but we can meet that, but at least untie our hands so we can go forward. If you keep saying, oh, well, you know, this might happen and that might happen, nothing would ever get built. You all know if you renovate your house and that the contractor, my husband's a contractor, they say it's going to be X amount, you know, it'll probably be a little bit more. He doesn't know exactly more because he doesn't, doesn't know how much more that's going to be. But we're in the window, we've raised this much money and my, my comments to you is just let's be reasonable and economical and, and serve the people and serve the kids.
Thank you, Marty.
Somehow the kids keep getting forgotten and all this. And then, you know what? And people will say, well, how many kids are we? We want more kids here, we want more families to move here. When we think about all the things we have for old people like me, I'm seventy four. I mean, there's pickleball, there's the lawn bowling, there's all kinds, there's five gyms in town. You know, there's all kinds of things for us to do, but we need to have this recreation for the kids and I'm talking about all the recreation and the plans for the park.
Thank you. Marty, we're, yeah, we're with you and I'm excited and I hope to hear from you next Thursday because I, it looks like this is on the agenda. I'm excited to hear that, so, thank you. I don't need you to respond to this, I just, but you're welcome.
I can, I can say that we're trying to come up with a number. I will also say, I don't think anybody in this room is going to be pleased with that number for the purposes of the district's direction in terms of protecting the district from spending any more of that money. So there's going to be contingency monies discussed at the board meeting. The average of these estimates will provide a target number for the group to raise to and also provide contingencies for the project to protect the overruns. Hence the MOU coming forward that is asking the community council to sign it to say that they will cover any escalating costs pre-construction or post-construction. That's the direction the board has given me and I'll reiterate what Michael said and I understand people are upset, I understand their passion about this project. The board sets policy, I'm an instrument of that policy. If that policy changes and the board directs staff to pull from general fund reserves and close the entire gap, I will do it tomorrow. But I'm toeing the line with the board. And the board has directed me to do this. And so I understand people are frustrated, but that's my job as a general manager and staff. Execute the board's will. Until that will changes, I have to move forward with the guidance I've been given, so.
Yes, the point is those beers are for me and my pillar director is not for the general manager. Correct, yeah. Better.
Christine, yes, I support all the points that have been made here and I, I think that the points essentially Marty has been, you know, don't look for the most difficult, most expensive solution. Look for a solution that's going to work. The vast majority of the money for this has already been raised and there's more coming in. You know, there's ever since it was, you know, it's, it's kind of an odd situation you place the group in. You have to reach the full amount of money, but we won't tell you what the full amount is. Yeah, it's a little bit hard for anyone to do that. And other communities, every other community in this county has a skate park. I, I would like the board to be committed to the idea of actually building this skate park instead of finding ways to create problems that stand in the way of constructing it. If it could be constructed between April and October, it will be twenty five or thirty thousand dollars less than if it's constructed during the rainy season. There you go, thirty thousand dollars saved right there. Commit to this and please get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still doing the skate board and my kids are always breaking their arms and things on them. Other than that, it seems the community likes to have one and the community agreed to that many years ago, before our Darren Landry got involved, a couple of boards ago. And everything was, they came up and then a entrance, we'll get forward. Like everybody else is saying, it's very easy to talk to PG&E. There's, there's a contractor you go and talk to and see what's going on. You can go to other contractors, come up for bid again. If you're getting such a big difference, bid it out again, no problem, it's everything done. If you've got a concern, there's local contractors are going to even probably do it for half price, but we don't go that route. We have to go through the, the whatever's board's direction, which is not acceptable. It's not giving us the proper numbers that they need to move forward. I think it should be redone for pricing, so it would be a final number instead of somebody guessing, he can get the highest number, can't be reached, so it can't be done and this city takes back the money. Let's do it.
Thank you, yes.
Michael, perfect example, grandchild, grandchildren are here spring break. They need this activity, not next year, not tomorrow, but they need it. And, you know, maybe the board needs to come to grips and just say, we're going to up the one hundred and seventy eight thousand and we're going to get this project done because our kids are our future. They have a right. And as good stewards, it needs to be done. It needs to be done and our kids are important. We want our grandkids to come visit. We want them.
Appreciate it. And, you know, most of these comments are directed at the board level decision making, but I, I've got it, I'm, I'm here, yeah. And is your granddaughter there?
This is my sixteen year old.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so let's public comment, no one else on Zoom, a great range of comments. Any other discussion, now this is not a discussion consideration, this is just an update, anything else? On, and we're not going to do another round of public comment, no. So, so the next, next topic is the community park restroom update. It's not, not open yet, but, but, you know, the, the ground has been tilled for you on that one.
Yeah. The, we're waiting on some electrical work to be done with our contractors so we can get power to the facility. There's some light, lighting that is coming in to be dark side compliant and that's going to be installed, targeting restroom opening the third week of April.
Okay.
So I have a question on that.
Yeah, in a moment, yeah. Any questions from committee?
No questions, but I just, I definitely want to remind everybody that the community park piece of East Ranch was purchased for the purpose of recreation. So no intention of building buildings on it or anything on it, but that is what it is supposed to be for, just as a reminder. And that the county did require that we put a bathroom there before we could recreate. So technically you can't walk around a loop trail, that's recreation. Need a bathroom there.
Okay, so.
So I have a question.
Questions, yes.
Yeah, so if, if the electrical has all been done and you're saying it's going to be usable with power in April, sometime in April, what was the cost to get PG&E out there to outfit that restroom through electrical power? And how long did it take for you to get PG&E out there while we're waiting and waiting and waiting for you to get PG&E to come out and take a look at this situation on Main Street?
So two different situations, although they seem similar. There is no power set up here across the street, so it's a different process and I'll let Mr. Green jump in here in a little bit. He can talk about the process for the East Ranch restroom, which is, there's a power source out there, they just have to drop a pole and run it from there, but he's more familiar. Mr. Green?
Yeah, great, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, so we did a load count test there at our booster station, which is kind of the heart of the water system right there and we had plenty of room in the panel to activate that electrical over there. So, yeah, we will be installing a new PG&E prescribed pole. We're not allowed to go onto PG&E infrastructure, so we're putting a exact same pole five foot away. It will cross our private road there and then go another seven hundred feet to the bathroom.
And what was the cost of that?
That was seventeen thousand dollars. That was just the electrical run, that was the electrical portion of the bathroom install. We'll slide over to the skate park, so I've had two projects in at PG&E. Both all full applications were submitted in its entirety back on March thirteenth and I just haven't heard back from it there. They have ruled out that power for the skate park will come from overhead and be, there's the vault that they have right there, so the primary from that will come just from that vault right there. We do not have to have PG&E as part of that project. I have four separate off-grid PG&E sites, which we supply power to our relay and communication stations for our skater, for our water and wastewater. Each one of those sites, and this is dating back three years and prior, were about fifteen thousand dollars in solar equipment and lithium ion batteries to install that power. And that is very low wattage and amperage setup for that, so that wouldn't power any powered tools or anything of that nature. So if you did have a feature in the skate park, like a bowl and that filled with water, you wouldn't have any power there to pump out or de-water that portion of that with. So that's something you might want to think about too before just supplying solar only power to there. And that's about all the.
And then the, and then the solar costs were several years ago for your skate assistance, so we can anticipate through inflation, that potentially a solar system at the skate park could be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, we're looking at getting some quotes, but I would, I would estimate it would be significantly higher than the fifteen thousand.
I would agree, I just had a conversation with our skater guy, just kind of get a ballpark verbal informal figure from him and he quoted exactly that, twenty-five thousand for that setup that we have, which would be very similar to other four locations that we have that off-grid power source at.
Any other questions from the public about the East Ranch restroom? Let's move on to the consent agenda and, and truly thank you for the, the energy here. So consent agenda, are there any revisions needed to the February twenty minutes? None, any public comment, observations on the, on the minutes? And do we have a motion to approve?
I have motion.
And the second?
I second.
All right. Hello, make the rounds, Mark?
Hi.
Hi, five eyes. So unanimous approval of the consent agenda brings us to regular business and I had put this first topic, discussion regarding learnings from the March twelve Brown Act training and anything else of interest from the post committee orientation slides from the February twentieth meeting, given that we didn't get through that, that whole set. So, you know, insights from the committee, the learnings. I was going to throw out a few, through fun questions, like why is our standing committee subject to the Brown Act again? Why is that?
Because it's the law.
Part of CCS. And, and this is, and you might appreciate, this is, you know, for, for, I'm, I'm just, you know, kind of challenging the, you know, someone on the committee to chime in. Because we're part of the district. Yeah, yeah, as, you know, the, the board of directors, an elected body and the, the standing committee is, is a, is a body of, of a, a public body and so, not saying that exactly right, but is, you know, in terms of doing the people's business, subject to all aspects of the Brown Act, meetings open and public. So, you know, is, you know, in that regard, everything we do, open and public. And so what's, what's the thing with serial meetings? What did you, what's your take on that? What, what's your takeaways on what that means for us?
Well, we just have to be careful about casual conversations that end up constituting an, an official meeting. And there are interactions that you might think would be perfectly, you know, just in the normal range of conversations that end up actually crossing a line into something that the public is entitled to be part of or to at least know is happening.
Yeah, well said, you know, and, and the key is, it's, it's not appropriate for a quorum of an elected body or an appointed, appointed officials to, to, you know, have conversations about district business where, you know, any conclusions can be reached outside of an open and public environment, so that's, that's the nature there. Ergo, ad hoc committees and we have, we have currently one ad hoc committee, the community park, ad hoc committee with Shannon and Jeff, moving that forward. And then, you know, and that's dashed up on the, on the agenda, so I guess with that, other questions, let's, let's move to, to item three B and community park planning update and.
Other than what you already presented, we really don't have much of an update. I mean, that's kind of everything that's happening right now, waiting, I guess, to schedule the meeting with the county. That's our next action item and other than that, nothing much has happened.
What have we got on? So I guess my question on that is, is do we have a timeframe for that, Matt? And what do you need from Shannon and me?
So Jim and I are going to, excuse me, Mr. Green and I are going to have a meeting on some of the documentation that's in that pre-application, application to have the meeting. There's some items that we need to collect and so Jim and I are going to set up and outline those, send it to you and then we'll go to the county and try to schedule that from there.
Okay.
It could, depending on the county's.
Yeah.
Schedule, you know, it could be a month, it could be two months before we actually get in the bill there. But I'll keep you up to date.
And I'm happy to provide, to help create any of the documentation that we need for this package, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and once we need, then we'll try to set up a little ad hoc meeting.
Okay.
And we'll hit it together.
So and then really because this bleeds into six C, then I think I'd rather spend our time talking about six C.
Let's, let's go, yeah. It's so, but, but yeah, absolutely. So any, any input, public comment on the, on the community park? And, and in fact, we've already heard some comment about the community park. We hear you.
Just a quick moment, I watched the rest of the March thirteenth meeting in the afternoon, so I looked at six C, watched all of that and I. Watched all of that, and I, I'm a little bit, um I was unclear about how the district's going to approach this, but there was discussion about the conceptual design. And then uh, going out for an RFP, and it seemed that, what made the most sense was to go to the county with a conceptual design, talk to them before going out. Which made some sense before going, before going out to um, RFP.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So is the, is that what was decided on?
Yes, you heard that right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, well summarized, thank you, yeah. Other community park comments, yes?
Yeah, just real quick, um, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Shannon.
Shannon, you mentioned that uh, the county required
The bathroom.
Recreation, which then required the bathroom.
Well, the piece of property, I was also part of raising the money back thirty years ago for it. Rodeo grounds was a community area.
Right.
Um, so when we purchased, when the money was raised to purchase the West Ranch, there was money that was additionally raised to purchase the East Ranch. East Ranch was kind of divided in half into one area that will stay pristine. And the other smaller spot, which is rodeo grounds, that will be developed, developed, I hate, that's really not the word, but used for recreation.
Well, okay, my point is, I I don't see the West Ranch as pristine, not when you start putting board blocks up and down the hills and all that stuff, so it's a different kind of use, fine. But it's pretty short sighted to think that a beautiful meadow and a creek and tree-covered hillside don't qualify for recreation, meaning just to walk through, should be Henry David Farrell.
I did, and.
We don't need baseball fields, frisbee fields, a paved walking path, none of that, I mean.
Yeah, no need to argue.
I don't, I don't, I, I don't understand, and because the county's requiring it, take a look at what the county's doing right now across from the Laguna Lake Dog Park, they're building an entire city inside the city, that huge development. They're not somebody I want to cozy up to, when we have such a pristine area of Cambry and so different than any other community along the coast. And, and again, I'm just gonna get back to this one thing, and then honestly, I will not speak. This bathroom, even if you had built a tough shit out there, if I'm over the pass a rule of a ten by fourteen tough shit and stuck it there, within, what do you think, within seventy-two hours? Within seventy-two hours, you're gonna have these little critters coming up to hang out there and camp out, and put their bags down, and make their vodka. I don't know how the hell you're gonna protect that nice concrete bunker you've built from all the abuse of the homeless. Again, when I say a hundred yards from that bathroom, there are major drug deals going down. So somebody should get their ass in here and take care of that before you start providing all these amenities for the lovely people of Cambry. You know, this is ridiculous, absolutely not. So enough.
And we know you, you're not alone in that perspective.
Yeah.
But I, but I've read, in, in both my FFRP role and, you know, in, in this, this chair, in this committee, I've read the ranch management plan multiple times, the, the conservation easement, and in each of these documents, it is very clear that the East Ranch the APN designated, um, is, is, has always been designated as, as commu- for community park for recreation. And that is the, the intent of this, this committee.
That was, that was stated on the future population of ten thousand, I believe, I got that number from somewhere. Isn't there a way to appeal this, given the quality of Cambry and my people flocking here, because of what we have of peace and quiet and serenity? Isn't there some way to stop all this crap going on over here?
It can be appealed, but when it goes to the planning commission.
It, it can, yeah, and, and, thank you, and, and yeah, we, uh, we're not, uh, you know part of the, the learnings from the, of the Brown Act training, is that we can engage, you know, back and forth dialogue, you know, open debate, but but we, we hear you, we hear you. Um, so that moves, any other comment, um? Uh, this is interesting, and that brings us to six C, the pros goals, uh, report, so. I realize that I'm not, I don't have that on screen to put up, but we can go through that.
Well, so what I want, was hoping that we could sit and discuss was that we have a report, a, a goals, list of goals that we came up with before we started the community park project. Um, not really knowing what we could do, we were just redesigned as a commission instead of our committee, um, and so we wanted to have some goals, we wanted to make sure we were working towards something. Um, I propose that we redesign those goals in alignment with what we're doing with the community park. So that is not two people in an ad hoc working on a community park, but our goals are the community park, and we start breaking up those goals, and people can take ownership of some of the components of the community park. That makes any sense?
Yeah.
So there's things I know that we don't want to take off those goals necessarily, but maybe keep an eye on them, I think the the um, the roadway from Burton to the community park, obviously rodeo grounds road. Something that if we ever have an opportunity to fix, we will, and you know, keep our finger on that one. Um, some of the other goals, maybe we're not going to be able to get to anytime soon, so we replace them completely with the park, so just thought I'd throw that out there.
I'm, I'm generally supportive of that, the only one that I will dispute removing, unless we have different direction from the board, is the open space. Piece of it, the parcels, and that was one of the questions that I wanted to have in terms of this agenda item. Relative to, I think, recent decision that was made at the board level regarding and I'm not sure what the right language is here, so I'll probably botch it, but a directive to uh, analyze the open space parcels and determine which parcels would be I guess, best utilized for divestiture. So that would mean some percentage, some subset of the total CCSD open parcels, which leaves some subset still in CCSD hands. What, my, my question is, and what do we, what is the planning for those that do not get divested? Happen to.
And have that, unless it's out of our
No, it's a good question, and really, the question, it could, it's also, what is it that the, the general manager needs from the prose committee, right, in terms of
Right.
Of, in terms of the both parcels within the perspective of open space, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
That are good.
Yeah, I mean, just, understanding if that, as we've had this discussion last time, sort of, and other times, the purview under facilities and resources, parks and recreation comes open space, even though it may not necessarily be specifically stated, right?
Mm-hmm.
But that we have that as part of our purview, and that we have it in our name, open space. Therefore, either directly in some kind of goal to support the board, or in a participatory manner, in another way to help be the advocate as we see it for open space. That would be sort of, let's say, cross, um, cross-functional, meaning fire, water, utilities, and facilities and resources, where some of those open spaces have those cross uses, so, right, so we debauchment, fire, utilities, the easements for water or sewer, right? Um, recreation, Fern Canyon Trails, so these things cross over, so that we would be able to provide input as the open space committee to help bring those together in a holistic way and bring conversations so that those properties are, are best managed to the community's benefit. Whether that includes, you know, a safety, a fire and safety, say there's a tree that needs to be removed, you know? Okay, there's some other kind of fire issue, there's an easement for water, there's an easement for waste. There's a trail like Fern Canyon, Santa Rosa Creek. I guess my point is, is that, that we're looking at these things together as an open space integrated plan for you know, and I'm not saying every parcel would, you know, be necessarily you know, constitute some need, maybe you want parts, just as long as it's we debauched, we're great, you know? Um, but there are other uses within, probably in the community, that would be possibly, that's what I'm suggesting, possibly come under the purview of open space in a way that's collaborative with staff, under the direction that meets a CCSD board goal. That's what I'm saying.
True, yeah, so um, we discussed it at the strategic planning meeting, and obviously David and I voiced, voiced our concerns about bandwidth. That, you know, any, any open space that turns into some form of recreation is a, is a drain on um, Mr. Gary, and so that was our concern, and I believe I publicly stated it, that at this moment, I would have preferred to just leave those open spaces under just, let's see if we can keep them, we debauched, because that's been such a difficult thing for the district to make sure that we're we debating them and taking care of hazard trees, and that before we stopped contracting and spending thousands and thousands of dollars a year, now Mr. Gary is doing it with his crews. Now we have a grant that's gonna be able to do that to free him up to deal with some other district issues. That discussion continued at the treaty to planning meeting into where I believe it was Director Gray said he was actually, can we get rid of some of these parcels to lessen the liability on the district, both financially and staff resource timing? That's where the discussion moved into, to the divestiture part. Had a meeting with um, Chairperson Thomas, um, was it yesterday?
Right, and I think it was.
And Director Farmer.
Yes.
Um, this divestiture piece is gonna be really, really difficult, and we don't even know if we can move forward with it, because it's
Okay.
It's so expensive on legal fees.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be done for every single parcel, has the same thing has to be done over and over again. Um, we did this with the Pocket Park, which was a lot of staff time and legal time just to get that piece sold, there's different uh, codes, government codes about affordable housing, um many sort of pieces, there's just, there's a lot to it, so I don't know if we'll be able to move forward with that. As far as integrating the open space into um, pros and adding some component of recreation, I would just say from a staff level perspective, or Pocket Parks, or wha- whatever, whatever it is, from a staff level perspective, I just don't think we're gonna be there for a few years until we really figure out how to be more efficient with that facilities and resources.
That wasn't what I was advocating for, is turning those parcels into recreation, but having a plan for those parcels in some way, shape, or form that either would be no management, we debauchment only, whatever, you know?
But what is the, what is the use of the open space if it's not uh, recreation?
Can I chime in a little bit?
Yeah.
Um, so as I'm thinking about, because we, obviously, we've talked about this, like, none of us have a plan, we just, we know we have some open space, and we know we have open space in our title. Um, I, I was thinking about this when I was walking on Ramsey, we have a sewer line going from Ramsey down to um, the East Ranch. That's actually a county road that's never been utilized, so it, it intermittently overgrows, but it's been used as a trail historically, you know, my whole life. Um, right now it's a little funky because the county keeps dumping stuff there, green waste there, um. But that's a perfect example of if the CCSD ever tackles cleaning up that sewer line, you know, and that is a county road, then bringing pros in just um, so that we have input into that, because that's, again, a perfect trail that saves you a lot of time walking downtown and much safer, um, and we'd be really interested in to help maintaining a trail, and really just a small section that actually needs maintenance. Um, again, just as an um, example of how we can contribute some input into a place that might be considered open space. That's all.
I understand, I, I understand that piece, I think the board sets the direction for pros, and so my interpretation, having various different conversations with the board, is that the board's main focus for the pros committee is the community park master plan, until the board sets a new direction for pros in terms of this is the next thing we would like you to tackle is working on open space management plans. I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you on where we'd go with it, I know staff has concerns, you know, and I'm just being candid, we have concerns about.
There's a partial a- answer, and, and when we read the bylaws, it, you know, clearly um, the, the pros committee works on items within its purview assigned by the board, uh, and um looks, identifies, seeks to identify needs within the community within the purview, so what um, you described as stating, the uh
Top down.
The top down, but the, the other responsibility is also bottoms up, and what, you know, yeah, yeah. Shannon is describing is, is the bottoms up, uh, community in, uh, perspective that we have.
Yeah, I agree, I just think it would need to be brought up to the board level for them to change the direction for where you want to go. What I, what I interpret is where you want to go with open space.
Yeah, yeah, for, for, any action needs to come to the board. So, uh, we've gotten into more than kind of Q and A and discussion, let's, let's, um, let's pause for a moment. There's been a lot of hands up, let's take a public comment, um, and let's, let's go, you know, um.
Can we, before we do that, because this is supposed to be in our idea, at least what everyone thinks about redesigning our goals in alignment with the community park, does anyone else on the other table here have any thoughts about that?
Yeah. I mean, I think because we're, this is my second meeting, right, so there's a lot that I don't know, and I'm still trying to pick it all up, so I, I don't know that I necessarily understand what those goals would be, but if I get an example of what you mean by specific goals, like you said, the road, is that, is the road considered, yeah, fixing that as ad hoc a goal?
Yeah, it's kind of listed on our goals currently right now, and, and I'm, I'm advocating that we align our goals with the basically what I presented as the recreational components in the phase three community park plan.
Yeah.
And so we replace, I, I know we don't want to replace the open space part of this, I get that, but we replace our goals with to align with those recre- recreational components on the master plan for the park. And we make those our goals.
I just want to be clear, I'm not opposed to replacing open space or not even having them. But I think we should be very honest and direct about if the board says that's not our purview, right? And it's not supporting community goals. Then I feel it's disingenuous to, and I don't mean this to be contentious, it's disingenuous to consider ourselves a pros committee.
Right.
That we should just become the Parks and Recreation Committee, and if that's a decision that needs to be made and is in, is where the board wants to go, I support it, I'm I'm okay with it, I don't agree with it personally, but I don't think it's right for us to have open space and not be advocating for and supporting efforts on behalf of open space in the community.
Yeah, and, and that's uh, well said, disingenuous to call ourselves Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, if open space is out of scope.
Right.
So we need to work that
Yes.
Um, we need to work that to the ground.
Okay.
Um, and um, it's um, you know, my bad that I did not include the um the goals that were included in the February uh, mid uh, agenda packet with our current agenda packet, that's my bad. So, um, well, but we'll, you know, get that in the next agenda packet, so we can do a deeper dive. And with, with that, I, I want to make the rounds of public comment, I've seen Laura's hand up, I've seen him his hand up. Um, Christine, you wanted to comment, let's go, let's go this way this time, uh, and, and Gordon, did you have something, or, okay, Tina's tired, Christine?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you, Jeff and Shannon, for your appreciation of our open space. Um, the, you know, periodically the board goes through this, and it's basically, as Mr. McElvee said, a very expensive proposition to attempt to divest from these lots, but at the same time, uh, he's concerned about the cost of maintaining them, I, I'm a little confused as to whether how that money would be best spent, especially since we started the meeting, talking about how Mr. Uh, Gary feels that he can accomplish the, the work he's doing now with one less staff member. Uh, there's a simple solution right there, hire, fill that position, and you'll be able to maintain these lots. They are not just, you know, I'm, I'm sort of concerned at Mr. McElvee's uh, treatment of them, as if they're just vacant lots with nothing on them, you know, as Shannon points out, these are valuable trails, these are important, beautiful parts of our community. And uh, this is, this is the open space committee. this is the open space committee, and that's why, because they are a valuable part, that should be cared for. That's part of Cambria's identity and part of what we should be doing here, not treating them as if they are a burden, but as if they are an asset, which they are. Thank you.
Follow up on that, so Mr. Gary is cost saving that position because we do have a multimillion dollar grant that is allowing us to maintain these lots for the next two years, so his position is to cost save that one staff person to enhance his budget to deal with other areas in the district that are underfunded under facilities and resources. Hence, yeah, that's all, you know, so I think that's a strategically smart move as long as we can maintain it. The lots, both conservation easements, Fern Canyon, you know, regular open space, the staff have moved away from trying to spend a bunch of money on maintaining those by doing it themselves. And we did that last year, and in previous years, we had contracted out, like I mentioned earlier, thousands and thousands of dollars. So it's not, it is a beautiful piece of Cambria, our open space, but that doesn't detract from the fact that it can be a burden financially, and from a GM perspective, constantly working on a department, facilities and resources that was a hundred thousand dollars in deficit for several years that lowered our general fund reserves. So now we're in a situation where, and I'm pretty sure by the end of this, this year's budget, David will be under, Mr. Gary will be under budget again for two years in a row. That's the direction the district needs to move, is to be fiscally responsible. So the board directed staff to look at the divestiture piece. It wasn't us coming to the board saying we want to sell all the lots. But we are concerned about maintaining them in the future, if these grant monies don't continue. We don't know if those grant monies will continue, and so we're doing our best we can from a staff level to make sure there's a handle. The good news is, is that for the next couple of years, we have those financially covered.
Good, good Shannon's perspective, and both of them, David, and I just wanted to make a rounds. David, did you have further comments? Laura, I know you do.
And it's been a frustration for many years. Earlier in the, the program, we talked about the hundreds of hours that the staff people are using in the skate park, which, which is fine, but this has always been a frustration for me that there's hundreds of hours work being done for some projects, but the open spaces are always a burden. These are environmental parcels, and if hundreds of hours can be spent on trying to permits for skate parks or any other plans, you could use those hundreds of hours, Mr. Gary for staff to take care of some of those environmental parcels. It's a matter of making it equal, equal treatment for equal perspectives of the community. And that's what I've been trying to say for years, just treat them equally. Skate parks are good. Parcels are good, there's a lot of good stuff, but treat it equally. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Share the love, yeah. Any other comments? Okay, Shannon, where do you want to take this?
Well, I mean, I guess one can't look at the goals. Can you just read, can I read out the top level goals?
Yeah, this is, you know, from the February, February minutes.
Okay, so the community park plan is our top level goal, which we all know, yeah.
He's, just so you guys know, this is when we met in 2023, these are 2024 goals. So these don't reflect current year, and I think that's what you're advocating.
Yeah, that we redo.
Revising them to a 2025, I don't know, 2026, I'm not sure what's the relevant horizon. These are 2024, 2023, explaining that.
Okay, inventory, and so with each one of these goals, we have the goal, we have an ultimate outcome, we have hopes to achieve, we have a directory, a directly responsible individual, which really helps to kind of lighten the burden on people. So we have a community park plan as our number one, which would be at the ad hoc with myself and Jeff. Then we have inventory of CCSD-owned undeveloped properties, which I would say that we actually accomplished.
We, that's the open space thing.
Yeah, that, that's the open space piece that we're speaking to. And I don't think, I mean, as a group, I don't think any of us want to drop open space, but maybe deprioritize that so we can focus on something else is really what I'm suggesting. The relationship with the Slow County Parks and Rec, which again, I think we've accomplished and need to stay on top of. And then the Rodeo Grounds Road, which again, we're probably never going to accomplish, but we need to stay on top of. And then the trail connecting Fiskelini West and East Ranch, safer passage over the highway is, again, something that we'll probably never accomplish, but would love to stay on top of. So my idea here is that these maybe don't go, the other goals don't go away, but we deprioritize them, and we make the community park plan our top level goal, and we parse it out by recreation, and someone can take it on as their project to go out and find information. Again, because it's fallen on the two of us, it's, it would help lessen the load, and we get a little bit more involvement in the community park, so.
That's great. And, and by the next meeting in, in May, you know, likely you'll have had the pre-planning meeting with the county, or you know, maybe not, but when we have that meeting, we'll have a good sense of the components that we could, you know, they may say, what are you waiting for? You can do this, 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 and this without any permits, and, and then whoa, they'll draw the line and say to do this, this and this. Yes, you need construction permits, so understanding that will, will inform, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So relative to all those goals, the current goals that you guys have at the board level.
Okay.
Does that, where are you with that, and does that inform what we may need to change here? Separate from open space, because I, I get that, but is there information coming out of the board's strategic planning process that would inform what we should have here?
Everything within, in, in fact, that's a good suggestion, at the May meeting, I will review the goals and objectives under the facilities and resources school.
Okay.
The, what's most relevant is the sorting out what we're going to do. I mean, this, you know, create a what do we call, how we word it, a management plan or consideration of divestment of, of CCSP-owned vacant parcels.
Right.
And you know, what, what we're hearing from the general manager is likely that will be we, we will strike out on, in that regard. And, okay, and everything that's currently on the books will remain on the books, and then so that will inform, yes, what we, what we look at.
Okay.
And that'll finish when it finishes, and, yeah, we can definitely bring that to, to the committee.
Is it still, sorry, just on that theme, does that mean, is it still useful for us to include Rodeo Grounds Road and, and this, I mean?
I think as it pertains to the community park, it's kind of definitely a piece of the community park. So definitely, it's not something I don't want to let go, I mean, I've called Caltrans, talked to the county, I mean, CCSD's done, David's done so much to help us fix that road, and I actually had a long talk with the county about the fact that they said that they would only maintain it up to the level that it was originally built, which is super interesting, because back when it was rodeo grounds, that road was very well maintained, because the community used it all the time, so I mean, if we were to be able to find the standard to which we, it used to be maintained and present that to the county, we actually have an argument. Again, I know that's a stone ball's chance in hell, but, which is why I would like to keep it on the list.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like we're done with that, and when we had the, when we had the brainstorming of, of what are the needs, that was top of charts, the need for that.
Yeah.
And also the east west ranch crossing on, on the highway, and we might be able to work with Public Works for, I mean, if we just had flashing lights, I mean, there's a variety of you know, but, but that's, we, we haven't really.
We're gonna have to get the government or the governor involved in that one, because Caltrans and no one else will even take phone calls.
Well, I think a really good approach would be NCAC, that's where Bruce Gibson and Blake Fixler.
Bruce, yeah, he knows about this too, though, already.
And you can continue to put the bug in his ear, but, but what I've heard on that meeting, they're pretty they're standing pat on, on that piece, but it's not to say that public pressure can't be leveled.
Yeah, well, so if we take these and move them onto the, the back page and kind of flesh out the community park after we meet with the county and have a little bit more, you know, understanding of what is going to require permit, what we can and cannot do, it's going to be simple. Then someone could take, like, say, the picnic tables, make that their responsibility, or, you know, two people take it on.
And you segment it.
And segmented, yeah, you go out and look for the right kind of picnic tables presented, because, I mean, we're not a decision-making body, and we have zero budget, so we have to come up with creative solutions, we have to come up with the plan, the idea, how much it is the cost, where we're going to get the money, law to work involved, and even putting a simple picnic table on a piece of property.
There's one to comment, I, I don't see Mr. Behringer's hand up, but you recall that he had, he had commented that Lions would love to fund picnic area, all right, so we, we have organizations.
Yeah, a couple as a matter of fact.
So, yeah. Dixon, you wanted to comment, you had a comment earlier. On the goals.
On the picnic tables, on whatever, you know, plans and designs have been already that Jeff and Shannon worked on. I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, and maybe this has been worked out, but we do know that the East Ranch is in a floodplain, so how do you how do you say, well, we have no funds, we can't do this, we can't do that? When you're in a floodplain, and as, as Mr. McElhany mentioned at the NCAC meeting in his comments, that, you know, even putting the skate park would be a problem there, which was considered an alternative, maybe on March thirteenth. How, how, how could you do that? If you haven't addressed the flooding issues? I mean, I go out there when we've had big rains and, and check to see the water, you know, how the water's looking out there. Right behind the Bravo Bank, for example, it's not Bravo Bank, now, Mercantile, I mean, there were regrets, I mean, there was water several inches deep. How do you plan any of this until you know that you've got a drainage plan in place?
Can I speak to that?
And I'm, yeah, when I'm through, you can, so that, I mean, the general manager addressed this at the NCAC. He said, well, it would even, it would be difficult to have a skate park out there because of the, of the floodplain and the number of setbacks. So, I mean, what about those issues that are staring you all in the face, all of us, and you have all these plans?
Okay, so, and, you know, flood, you know, the floodplain is one of the considerations that will be discussed in this meeting with, with the county.
I can.
And we're, we're not going to deep dive on that now, because we don't have the data in front of us, but.
Yeah, everything can be problematic until we talk to the county about what can go in and what can go out, you know? The skate park was an option for the East Ranch that I was told to bring forward, give us options. Depends on where the location of the, we haven't even talked about where the location of the skate park would have gone, so that's kind of a moot point right now, but it can be, any, any piece of this can be problematic until we get to the county and actually find out about how to address these concerns, so.
On the west side of the East Ranch, the highway side, that does turn into the seasonal lake, and that's not what we're touching. And from the county, we have a line that designates the floodplain, and it doesn't encompass the entire property, rodeo grounds. It's just along the riverbank, so, but you're right, the county is going to tell us.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna guide us, and they're gonna ask us questions that we may not have answers to, or have to go back to the drawing board. Maybe that leads to enough information to where we bring forward another request for an RFP for designs, and what can, what can go out there, we, we just don't know, you know, and that county's going to be a big player in that, so.
Yeah.
Um, this is almost more of a philosophical point, taking into account, basically where I think you've used like a, Shannon's used like, you know, thirty-five thousand play elevation view of this whole thing. One of my concerns is how do you create a park that feels unified? As opposed to just a collection of individual components that have their recreational value, which is clearly the stated mission and priority of the park, but I haven't been here that long, I've been in town about two and a half years, but from what I can tell, this is truly a generational opportunity, quite literally, because this was first talked about in, in the nineteen nineties, and so all I'm saying is that as we look at this, I, I hope we can keep in mind and also develop a, a full vision for what, how this, all these pieces are going to work together, both the individual recreational components, but also the overall space, the, the natural side and, and everything else. And I, I say this in part, when, when Jim talked about, oh, Lions Club is ready to put up a gazebo, oh, what's that gazebo going to look like, you know, how is that going to work with the bigger vision of the park? So, again, this is more of a, a long-term, maybe a little bit, again, philosophical way to look at things, but you know, we're trying to create something that's a whole and not just a collection of individual, individual components, and I just hope we can keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yeah, the only thing I would say to that, and I one hundred percent agree, is that we tried to parse it out a little bit to help with the fundraising aspect, but you're right, we, and we haven't had the money to, like, design a park.
Right.
That's, I mean, but I think if we did get the money, like, someone wanted to give us a couple million dollars, boom, we would design a park.
You have a hand raised from Mr. Behringer. Jim?
Yes, I'm talking on my phone, so I hope you can hear me. I, I think that the Lions Club would be more than happy to find a pre-made or a design for a gazebo. Man, go through that effort and present it to pros. If you like it, you like it, if you don't, you don't, if you want to change it, change it, but we are ready for a significant amount of funds to create that element. So, if we can get it done by the Fourth of July, that would be great. Just let us know. In, in fact, if it's okay, we're just gonna do it, we're gonna talk to some engineers and talk to some people and create a design and propose it. That's, that's my thought.
Yeah.
No one will stop you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you just can't, you know, you know, go build it without checking in with the GM, but but, but sure, you know, bring it to us, bring it to us, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Awesome, thank you. Other? Yeah, yes.
Uh, yes. I, I was not sure if I understood from you that Mr. McElhany said it's very difficult to divest of these lots. And I thought I understood from you that they, basically you were not going to pursue this, but I hope that that will not be only after the district has committed to the high legal bills that Mr. McElhany mentioned. You know, I understand that there's limits in the board not wanting to pay more for the skate park, but the board is, has often been willing to pay very high legal bills, hundreds of thousands of dollars last year. And I, I hope you would reach a decision on not divesting from those lots before you have to pay for expensive legal work. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else on this? So, so we'll, we'll get this organized and bring this on to the, the May agenda.
And if, if you, if you want me to, I can make a draft of what the goals could possibly look at. It's, I think, much easier to edit than it is to create, and then you guys can throw up all over it, we can rearrange it, we can redo it, but at least you'll be able to see it on paper.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because it gives us something, something to look at.
Yeah.
It's a little bit easier for us to understand.
Okay.
Fantastic, and you're not asking for, for an ad hoc or a buddy system, but you, but you're, you're just gonna take that develop straw man and, and bring it.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay, so I think that brings us to future agenda items, anything else on this? And the, you know, what I you know, I, you know, anybody else notice that the Vineyard Community Church uh has a uh a, you know, wine barrels, disc golf course, night holes uh and a children's playground? I had a chat with several folks, uh, you know, at the, at the community church and um the, yeah, right, the children's playground is for church events. It, it, they it's not an open community, uh, you know, based on their church requirements. So it doesn't certainly does not have the, the need for, for a, for a children's playground on, on the east ranch. Um, you, you know, you, you have to think about, huh, there's night holes on that side of the of Main Street. What if there were night holes on this side of Main Street? Uh, you just got me thinking, but.
Make it an executive course.
But would we, would, would you want to have someone from uh the, the church come and just share their lessons learned because um that wasn't there last year, it's there now. Uh, would that be, would, would that be useful to, to, to hear from them?
If we were a private organization with private land, it would already been done.
Yeah.
So I mean, it, we have a, as far as the disc golf is concerned, we, we already have a designer who's, and money and everything. We're like ready to go. Um, so I don't know that we, there's a whole lot we can glean from that. Um, same thing with the playground. We know, we don't have a design, but we kind of know what has to occur to create the design.
Yeah.
And what we have to accommodate. Um, so again, if we were private, we'd already have it done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh, fair enough. Uh, but we'll see. Uh, and uh, also Rodney McFarland, uh, you know, he, he had come to give a little, you know, uh, he was, you know, going to present at that February meeting, but then he wasn't ready. So he's asking to be on the May agenda. Uh, for, for the forest health work on the FRP. What else do we have for the next agenda?
Just reviewing the goals again.
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and Julie, did you have something to add to future agenda?
Yeah, I would just like to make sure the skate park stays on as a agenda item, not just necessarily a project update report.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. Absolutely. Uh, thank you. Any other things to put on the agenda? And, and just in terms of the agenda process, um, you take, you know, our, our next meeting, I think it's the May, May fifteenth, Thursday, the if you take the week and a half, that Friday or Monday, that's when I send the agenda content to Ms. Dodson uh, for publication. So that's input on the agenda prior to that point. That's like open season to provide input on, on, on the agenda of, and my process, of course, is reviewing that with uh, with the, the vice chair, uh Shannon Sutherland. I review that with the general manager. Um, and that's, that's the process.
So an email would suffice.
Absolutely.
upcoming agenda. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Good. Yeah, email, text message, whatever works for you.
Yeah.
Preferred. Yeah, yeah. But yeah, emails and it's easy. Um, does he hand, uh, Margie, were you, oh, okay. I think with that, it is three fifty-four PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thanks.